Order in the court. I'd like to call this special meeting of the Board of Education, June 5th, 2018, to order. Please be seated and in order now that you're seated, stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very enthusiastic, that's terrific. We now have some commendations, and after the Special Olympics commendations, we will have a brief recess. And to present the Special Olympics, Eric Ullao, Dana Shackman, Faith Hipsmann, assisted by Board members Lorraine and Stacy. Mike Salotto, by the way, and Suzanne Donahue regret that they will not be able to be here. Christie Lorenzo will be late.
Okay?
Okay?
Do we get up right now?
That would be good.
My name is Karen Escobar. Dan Styler, Kim Decurcio, and I had the pleasure of coaching 14 elementary Special Olympians. All of these athletes attended practices ready to beat their own personal bests. The day of the big event, they went home with many ribbons and medals. We are very proud of all of these athletes. Without further ado, I would like to call these awesome athletes to join us onstage. Ryan Ali. Come on Danny! Christiana DePaulis. Yvonne Macilian. There's Nikki and Sean. Okay, Logan Whitfield! Simon Sampaio. And Isabella Zimberi. Liam McMullen. Go ahead Liam, go get your certificate honey. Again, here is your Special Olympian Elementary Team. Good job guys!
That's pretty good. 30 days.
Who should come up next?
Yeah, they should come up next. Dana Shackman. They need to sign up. Come on Dana.
There's something.
Of course I don't have my glasses on so I can't see.
Once again, it is my honor to be here for, I think, my eighth or ninth year, recognizing this awesome team of middle school athletes that I am not only so lucky to coach, but they are also stuck with me as a teacher for the next three years. This past January, we began training for our West Point Special Olympic competition. These guys worked really, really hard, learning all the events that they needed to participate in, which were track and field competitions. Not only did they rise to the occasion like they always do, but everyone came home with medals to boot. I'm not going to go on and on, and I could, but I would like to just leave you with a little thought. I always try to come up with some kind of little saying to go with these guys. So every child is a different kind of flower. Together, they help make our community one big beautiful garden. And with that being said, I would like you now to meet our little flowers. I am. It's going to take some of them a while. Jordan was unable to make it. Sofia Vargas. Lorraine. And I just want to say thank you to this awesome team of ours.
Faith, Hope, and Charity.
You may want to announce her, sweetie. And next is Faith Hipsmann.
Next is Faith Hipsmann.
Come on people. What? No, they're dirty. She coming up?
Is she coming up?
I can't see.
First and foremost, I would like to thank the parents and the grandparents for their support in making our athletes' day special. Second, I would like to thank my assistant coaches, Heidi Anger, Sharon Lipsky, and Chrissy Ansinersia, for without them, our varsity team would not have been so successful. Also, the Cozy Cafe in the high school, which is the life skills program, donates their tips to purchase lunch for our athletes and our coaches, and also for their continued support. This evening, we recognize the achievements of our varsity athletes. Through their determination and perseverance, they were awarded with medals in all their events. I will now introduce our varsity team athletes. Our first athlete, Farah Hamid. Joey Hedy. Emily Navarro, she couldn't be with us tonight. Aladdin Rabey. Kaitlyn Schaefer. Okay, last but not least, our last athlete. We will miss him because he's going on to bigger and better things, college. He's graduating.
So while they're taking their picture, I just need to, and I can't believe I forgot, I need to thank all of my adult helpers who too without, we never could have gotten to where we did. So thank you!
Those who want to leave, may leave. I call this meeting back to order after the brief recess. No board business was conducted during our brief recess. The 2018 Bus Safety Poster Contest winners presented Dawn Russell, Anthony Anderson to assist.
Good evening, everyone. I am honored to recognize our school bus safety poster winners this evening. This year's theme for our poster safety contest was "My School Bus: The Safest Form of Student Transportation." Well, when I first read that, I thought, that is a lot of words to put on a poster along with a safety message and a picture. But the children stepped up and they did a fantastic job. I'm so proud of them. So in Division One, which is grades K through 2, in first place, we have Clover Sarmiento. So there's something special that you need to know about Clover's poster. She has a reproduction of it tonight because her poster is on its way to Albany, New York, where it's going to be judged at our July conference. So we're very excited. And for her first prize winner, she received $25 in the envelope that she received tonight from the Tri-County Association for Pupil Transportation. Second place, we have Hannah Chang from Central Valley Elementary. And then in third place, we have Sofia Cuevas Restrepo from Sapphire. Then moving along to Division Two, grades 3 through 5, in first place, we have Chloe Bevaquah from Pine Tree. Did I say her name? I tried. She's awesome. Chloe also, her poster is also going to Albany, and she has a $25 cash award from Tri-County Association. Division Two, second place, Ravati Sindhu Kalavakuri from Central Valley. And in, good job. And in third place, we have Jillian Portnoy from Central Valley. Okay, thank you, Mr. Martin. I'm sorry if I skipped over Hannah Chang. She was our second place winner in Division One from Central Valley Elementary, Pine Tree. How did I mess that up? That's hers, okay. That's okay.
It might be here.
It may be here.
Come show us which one is yours.
Maybe somebody else have her poster by accident there. Hannah! But, alright, so the stickers were put on at the schools, so that's, are you sure Hannah?
You still won.
You did? Sure, you can come see. Okay, so when we judge them at the school, they come with the stickers on the back, so I'm not sure what happened, but we will locate, did they give you your poster at the school? Okay. So what we'll do is...
You still won.
You still won, and we're going to come to your school tomorrow, and we'll do a special presentation with your poster. Is that okay? Alright, congratulations sweetheart. Alright, so did we, Division Three, first place, we had Jamie Kalab, Middle School. Jamie, congratulations on your poster, and that's a reproduction because her poster is also on its way to Albany with the other two, and she's got a $25 prize for first And then Division Three, second place, Kristin Jepesel from Middle School. And then we have Gianna. Congratulations. And in third place, Division Three, we have Gianna Eberhart from the Middle School. Congratulations to all of our winners. And Hannah, I promise, we will come and pay you a special visit tomorrow, and we'll locate your poster. Thank you.
And now our Odyssey of the Mind winners. Odyssey of the Mind winners, Ms. Deborah Garland, presenter. Dan to assist. Dan Isrodi assisting from the board.
Good evening, everyone. This year, Monroe Woodbury is celebrating 38 years of participation in Odyssey of the Mind. It's a pleasure to be here to celebrate a very distinguished group of students. Creative problem-solving with a team of seven is never an easy challenge. The complexity of the problems given to these students increases each year, yet each encounter strengthens the flexibility and originality of thought that is so necessary in today's complex world. The American teacher and artist Mary Lou Cook described students' experiences in Odyssey of the Mind beautifully when she said, "Creativity is inventing, experimenting, growing, taking risks, making mistakes, and having fun." And our Omer's sure do have fun. Team Hutter ran into some technical difficulties, but we do have a representative from the team. Leanne Hernandez, come on up. Team Hutter placed first at the regionals and fifth at the state competition in Binghamton, where they competed in Odyssey's Classics Problems Number Three. The rest of her teammates are Sophie Bear, Emma Shay Philonau, Avlin Jaskowski, Mark Lee, Amara Lightner, and Julia McHugh. Congratulations to Team Hutter. The next team to come on up came in second at states and was invited to compete at the World Finals in Iowa in May. While there, they placed sixth out of 76 teams from all over the globe. The team received impressive scores for their creativity for the Odyssey theatrical problem number five. Please welcome Joanne McInerney and her Omer's. Anushri Borogohain, Jamie Kalub, Colin Davidson, James Dawson, Kushi Garish, Shreya Garish, and Isabel Varghese.
She likes you.
I think a little.
And now to present our 2018 Johns Hopkins Certificate of Distinction, once again, Deborah Garland.
Hello again.
Assisted by Stacy.
The Johns Hopkins University Center for Talented Youth is a world leader in gifted education. They conduct national and international talent searches to identify, assess, and recognize outstanding academic talent. Identified students are invited to participate in this annual talent search. The following fourth grader received qualifying scores with high honors. Congratulations to fourth grader Michaela Kim.
And now to present the 2018 NISMA Students Level Six A-plus Ratings, Christopher Toborski.
Good evening. Thank you to the Board of Education and to the Cabinet for inviting me to tonight's very special meeting and for helping me to recognize many of our outstanding students and teachers on their achievements at NISMA festivals this year. Let's begin with the NISMA Solo Festival. NISMA, or the New York State School Music Association Solo Festival, is perhaps the most important event for the individual student musician. Students spend months preparing a solo. They are also asked to perform a series of scales, rudiments, or arpeggios, as well as a sight-reading excerpt. NISMA solos range in difficulty level from Level One, or Elementary, through Level Six, which is professional level. I am thrilled to announce the Monroe Woodbury students who performed on a Level Six and scored an A-plus, or a 97.7 of 100. Please help me welcome to the stage the following students. Hayden Abrahams. Zion Amparo. Sidney Bulla. William Carter. Deanna Cohen. Emma Dawson. John DiPatrice. Christian Johnson. Emma Katzman. Alana Kim. Sophia Kolbecker. Brett Lederman. Isabella Lafayette. Nie Li. Yena Lee. Joshua Levasser. Daniel Luo. Tessa Lidle. Peter Mastropolo. Eliana Matzel. Marissa Mitchell. Fred Morad. Carly Newman. Katherine Nickel. Holly Paterno. Jason Pearson. Christina Piazza. Elizabeth Rivera. Sohan Saha. Camila Scanlon. Emily Shaker. Jennifer Song. Shayna Steyer. Emily Wong. Spencer Ward. And finally, Victor Yan. Let's hear for the following students.
Been two? Dan, you gotta get up, you're doing the teachings too.
When? Oh, shoot. I thought we were done.
And now the 2018 NISMA Majors Results, once again, Christopher Toborski.
The NISMA Major Organization, or Majors Festival, is one of the most important and high-stakes events of the school year for our music department. Teachers prepare their ensemble to the highest level on three NISMA-approved musical selections. Two New York State-certified adjudicators evaluate every aspect of the performance, from professionalism and poise to musical phrasing and intonation. If the teachers are present, please come on up to the stage when your name is called, please. Michelle George, Central Valley Orchestra, Level One Gold. Mitchell Lang, Central Valley Elementary Band, Level One Gold. Amy Hato, North Main Elementary Orchestra. Lara Terrello, North Main Elementary Band. Kimberly Harrison, Pine Tree Elementary School Band, Level One Gold. Hannah Walton, Pine Tree Elementary School, Level One Gold with Distinction. Stephen Wing, Middle School Chamber Chorus, Level Three, Gold with Distinction. Christopher Toborski, Level Three, Gold with Distinction. Peter Giorgio, Middle School Symphonia, Level Three, Silver. Ryan Walther, Middle School Wind Ensemble, Level Four, Gold. Alexis Koutravellis, Level Four, Gold. David Crone took two groups to NISMA Majors, his High School Treble Choir on Level Five and his High School Voice Ensemble on Level Six, and both groups earned a Gold with Distinction. Lauren Bono, High School Symphonic Orchestra, Level Four, Gold. Frank Petricelli also took two groups to NISMA Majors, his High School Jazz Ensemble and his High School Symphonic Band on Level Five and Four respectively, both earning a Gold. Bonnie Glazier, High School Chamber Orchestra, Level Six, Gold with Distinction. And finally, the High School Wind Ensemble under the direction of Richard Reagan, Level Six, Gold with Distinction. Congratulations to all of our teachers.
You have to get over there.
Before I go, the Monroe Woodbury community has been recognized by the NAMM Foundation for its outstanding support of music education, receiving for the seventh year in a row Best Community for Education honor. Monroe Woodbury continues to shine at the NISMA festivals and elsewhere, and the success of the department begins with the foundational skills taught by our general music staff as early as into kindergarten and continues right throughout high school. Congratulations to the entire music department, district, and its community, and I have a plaque I'm presenting here to the Board of Education and to the Cabinet. Best Communities of Music Education 2018. Congratulations.
Well, don't put it there, I can't see what's next. Thank you. Class of 2018, valedictorian and salutatorian, Mr. John Casti, presenter.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity. This is a true honor for me to be able to introduce you to two wonderful young women. First, I'll salutatorian Shannon Heiner. Shannon, come on up. Shannon has a GPA of 99.8583, has participated in many clubs during her high school years. She's a member of the Interact Club, which is a community service club, LEED, which is a freshman mentoring club, and she is currently the Secretary of Stars, a club that creates and shares valuable health lessons with our students. Shannon is a member of the High School Wind Ensemble, where she has played the flute for the past two years. She's members of both the National Honor Society and the French Honor Society. Shannon is a member of the varsity volleyball team, where she was named to the Varsity 845 All-Star Teams in her junior and senior years. In the fall of 2018, Shannon will be attending the Honors College at Rutgers University in New Brunswick, New Jersey, where she is the recipient of the Presidential Scholarship. Shannon plans on studying biotechnology and possibly continuing her studies in graduate school. Ladies and gentlemen, Shannon Heiner. Our valedictorian is Kathleen Rigner. Kathleen, come on up. Kathleen has a GPA of 100.1353. That is impressive. Is a member of the National Honor Society, as well as the Spanish Honor Society. During her high school career, Kathleen has participated in a variety of clubs. She's a member of LEED, a freshman mentoring program, and is an active participant of the Interact Club, which is a community service-based. She has been a member of the Monroe Woodbury Varsity Volleyball Team for three years and the captain of the team for two years. Kathleen is also the recipient of the 2018 Orange County Scholar-Athlete Award. Outside of school, Kathleen is a treasurer of the Local Students for Life Group, and she volunteers at Craigville Bible Church as a nursery worker, children's church teacher, and a worship leader. In the fall of 2018, Kathleen will be attending Stevens Institute of Technology in Hoboken, New Jersey, where she plans on studying chemical engineering and will be enrolled in the Pinnacle Scholar Program. Ladies and gentlemen, Kathleen Rigner. The great thing about these two young ladies, they've known each other like their entire life, they play volleyball together, and they're really good friends, so it's nice to see the both of them up here. Congratulations, ladies.
There's an anonymous quote that reads, "Volunteering is the ultimate exercise in democracy. We vote in elections once a year, but when you volunteer..." We vote in elections once a year, but when you volunteer, you vote every day about the kind of community you want to live in, every day." This next group of volunteers, countless hours to support our children and to create a wonderful sense of community here in our district. Our 2018 PTA Presidents, our PTA Council, Don Taubert. Our SEPTA co-presidents, Alicia Pavagiano, along with Tara Sovik Bandal, who could not be here this evening. Our high school PTA President, Ricky Blumenau, who unfortunately could not be here this evening. Our middle school PTA President, Don Taubert. Another set of flowers. Our PTA President for Central Valley Elementary, Solene LaFontante, who could not be here this evening. Our North Main Elementary President, Ashley Torres. Our Pine Tree Elementary President, Shannon Chambers. Our Sapphire Elementary President, Jennifer Gillette. And our Smith Clove Elementary co-presidents, Bernie Vega and Kelly Chicharella. Congratulations.
And now our 2018 Community Connection Awards, presented by Dr. Eric Hassler, assisted by Don Beeler.
Good evening, everyone, and congratulations to everyone who is being recognized this evening. The Community Connection Award is an annual award given to an individual or organization that contributes time and/or resources and exemplifies the spirit of Monroe Woodbury through community-based activities. However, this statement is an understatement. The contributions of these honorees is truly beyond measure. And here this evening are our building principals, who will tell us a little bit more about tonight's honorees. And first up is the Principal of Sapphire, Mrs. Karen Brock.
Thank you and good evening. On behalf of the Sapphire Elementary School Building Level Committee, I would like to invite the members of the Monroe Volunteer Ambulance Corps up to join me. As they're walking up, I'm just gonna share with you a little bit. For the past three years, the Monroe Volunteer Ambulance has provided educational programs for our students and staff. They always support our students and families with their time and knowledge. I would like to thank Mrs. Nancy Pfeifer, President. Brian Williams, Captain. Wayne Chan, Past President. Emily Walker, Katie Linderman, Carly Thumann, Megan Murtha, David Woodhouse. Unfortunately, Wayne Jones and Witcher Haley were called to assist some of our community members, so they did have to leave, but I would like to say thank you on behalf of Sapphire. Thank you very much for all of your time and volunteerism.
They picked me up a couple of times.
Did they?
These things once.
And here this evening to speak about Smith Clove Elementary's honoree is Mr. Chris Berger, the principal, and Ms. Reagan, the assistant principal.
Good evening, everyone. On behalf of Smith Clove, I would just like to thank Ms. Pierce and Jay's Deli for the tremendous amount of support they have shown our staff, our students, and our Smith Clove community as a whole over the course of this year. So at this time, I would like to bring up Ms. Pierce and our assistant principal, Mrs. Reagan, is going to speak a little bit more on behalf of Smith Clove. So Ms. Pierce, is she here? I do not see her, but we would like to recognize her anyway, and we'd like to share, at least with the community that is here today, so that we can kind of inform you of some of the many things that Jay's Deli has done on behalf of Smith Clove and our community. So I will welcome Ms. Reagan.
Thank you, Mr. Berger. So Colleen and Jay's Deli have a commitment to community support. At every turn, they have supported the school district and Smith Clove specifically with delivery of items, special requests, and of course, reasonable pricing. During the past year and long before, they have gone above and beyond in supporting Smith Clove, and because of this support, the staff has been nourished. But more importantly, resources have gone to charitable donations rather than the purchase of food items for the events hosted at Smith Clove. From our ENL orientation to our Ho Down for Hope and collaborating with our PTA to offer generous amounts of food, Colleen and Jay's Deli have always been there, and we thank them for all that they have done for the Monroe Woodbury community. Thank you.
And here this evening to recognize the Central Valley Elementary School honoree is Rebecca Rodriguez, the school principal.
Hi.
Hi.
Good evening, everyone, it's an honor to be here. Tonight's Central Valley honors the Orange County Chinese Association. Mr. Wu, are you here? Come on up. OCCA, come on up. Is a not-for-profit organization that is committed to broadening our borders and helping our students engage in the beauty of the Chinese culture. Mr. Wu met with me at the very beginning of the school year to express his commitment to continue to support the Chinese cultural immersion experience throughout Orange County. Their mission is to promote cultural awareness, acceptance, and support a cross-cultural dialogue. Mr. Wu provides open access to his program and provides scholarships to our students that cannot cover the already very modest fee. Mr. Wu is very quick to say that OCCA belongs to everyone. Love that. To its members and friends, to those who love Chinese culture and are interested in learning Chinese. They are open to the community every Saturday and provide scholarships not only to our students, but to the community members as well. Central Valley is honored to host and support OCCA, and we thank you for taking our students on a journey of beauty, cultural awareness, and acceptance. Our students truly enjoy their experience in your program and our community. Thank you, Mr. Wu.
And here this evening to recognize the North Main Elementary honoree is Mr. Cotto, the principal, and Mr. Davis, the assistant principal.
Scary group out there. Our Community Connection Award recipient has devoted a significant portion of his life, the last nine years, to support the students and families at North Main in the pursuit of their dramatic experiences. Mr. Albert Murray, would you please come forward? As stated in the mission statement, in partnership with families and our community, the district's mission is to promote confidence, inspire a passion for learning, and prepare students to become responsible global citizens. This year's recipient has committed his passion to the arts and devoted his time to encourage the students involved in our student theater productions to reach for the stars. Using his knowledge of set design, sound production, and general orchestrator of the behind-the-scenes of our school productions, he supports our students' dreams. The North Main Drama Team has produced multiple Broadway shows since 2009. The shows started on a small stage at North Main, with the team working behind the scenes to create a big stage atmosphere in our small setting. The shows soon outgrew that very small stage. With the help of a small group of volunteers, the team took the show on the road to the big stage at CV. The volunteer group and the production company began to grow into a group of over 75 volunteers, led by Mr. Murray, his wife Pat, I can't forget you, Pat. The sets for the fourth and fifth graders that our recipient has created rival those of a Broadway show. Our students dance, sing, act on a stage with set designs that give them a magical feel. Along with the sound came lighting, design, set construction, set transportation, and teardown, all at the hands of Mr. Murray. Multiple shows, multiple nights, with near perfection. His time commitment is nothing short of incredible. His passion for perfection contagious, and on any given day during the rehearsal season, you can see Mr. Murray, our recipient, either before or after school at North Main. The custodians thought about giving him a key at one point. He is known to all of them, they think of him as MW staff. It would not be a stretch to say that his dedication to North Main Elementary has effectively changed the lives of many students and their families forever. His positive impact on North Main will last forever. This year's North Main Community Connection Award goes to Albert Murray.
Here this evening to recognize the Pine Tree Elementary honoree is Mr. Brian Jades, the principal.
Good evening, everybody. And our Pine Tree, BLC, has the privilege of announcing our Community Connection Award. About four years ago, we started our Special Olympics team in the K-5 level, and our recipient tonight has been at every practice, all the different practices on Saturday mornings from December to April, at all four events, and he does that with a smile on his face, with enthusiasm and with pure joy. And you saw him up here earlier, he got a standing ovation once, we're gonna give it to him again, Mr. Matthew Stenson, please join us.
And here this evening to recognize the middle school honoree is Mr. Mike Passano, the principal.
Thank you, everybody. So it is absolutely my privilege and honor to welcome at this time, Woodbury Police Officer, Mr. Charlie Tausk, up to the stage. Officer Tausk is a vital member of the Monroe Woodbury Middle School community. He has been a resource for us throughout the school year. Unfortunately, our nation has seen more than its share of tragedy this year in schools, and Officer Tausk has been a consistent force in the middle school. Coming to us for any way that he can give a helping hand, he is always available via text, and I apologize, any family time that I've interrupted, to the Tausks with texts and calls for advice and feedback, Officer Tausk is there, and most of all, he is always putting students first, he is always thinking about what's best for kids, whether it's coming into our faculty meetings to explain safety initiatives that are going on throughout the district, or simply just there for a kid who is in need and checking up and making a home visit. We are so grateful, and Officer Tausk, you are so deserving of this Community Connection Award, congratulations, thank you.
And finally, here this evening to present the high school honoree is Mr. John Casti, the principal.
Good evening. At this time, I'd like to invite our two Community Connection Award winners, Mary Alice Presto and Lauren Savino, to come to the stage. Mary Alice and Lauren are both part of the Alcohol and Drug Abuse Council of Orange County and work very closely with us here at the high school in our health classes, as well as part of our drug committee that we have here in the building. They are also members of our 3C Committee, which is the Crusader Coalition Committee, which is our drug council that we have with community members in Harriman, Monroe, and all our surrounding areas, where we have members of the community come to speak with us and help us address situations throughout our district. They are a vital resource to us in many ways and are always a phone call away when we have a question, and they are always gracious enough to invite us to the ADAC workshops and events so that we can continue our learning and collaboration with them. I thank them both for all they do, and in my mind, they are a dynamic duo. Thank you.
And up next on our agenda is the recognition of spring athletic championship teams, and I'd like to introduce Ms. Lori Hawk, our Director of Athletics.
It's my pleasure this evening to recognize two athletic teams that are not only two of the most successful programs in school history, but two of the most successful in the county and the section as well. This spring, our boys and girls outdoor track and field teams both won their division, county, and sectional titles. In addition, both teams were named New York State Scholar-Athlete Teams and ended up sending a total of 22 athletes to states. This is an incredible amount of students from one school. Many of these same athletes, just an extra tidbit of information, not only participated in outdoor track, but indoor track and cross-country as well. So some of these very same athletes and their coaches have earned a divisional title, sectional title, and the county championship in each of those three seasons. sectional title, and the county championship in each of those three seasons. So if you think about it, we have students, athletes, and coaches who have earned 18 titles just this year alone. It's quite the running program, and not only is that impressive in itself, but it is the first time that that has ever occurred for any sport in school history. I'd like to congratulate our coaches, I apologize, our coaches and our athletes, I apologize that they're not here this evening, but there are over 300 of them, and they're probably still practicing. So congratulations to our outdoor track and field team, and thank you.
And now we will honor our retiring staff. Matthew Matt Kravitz will preside, assisted by the Board and the Cabinet.
Yeah, you guys are all there, yep. So, good evening. I've had a chance to meet with a number of people who are about to come to the stage for exit interviews, and one of the things I get to say to them is that it's bittersweet because, while I'm excited for them and the fact that every day will soon be Saturday, there are a large number of years between all of them, and with that number of years comes a number of lives that have been touched. And so for me, one of my favorite parts of the exit interview is really just the opportunity to say thank you. Thank you for all of your years of service to our district and our students, and thank you for having such a positive impact on the lives of our kids. With all that said, we have a large number of people who've retired. Some have already left, but we're gonna recognize them anyway. Some are in other states or countries, and some will be there soon. We have a large number of retirees across our bargaining units, our MWTA, our CSEA, and our MWEA, and all of these people combined, Brian Gedeese, how many years do you think all these people combined have given to the school district? 2,500? No. Lori Hock, how many years do you think all these people have given to Monroe-Woodbury? Really? How about you, Georgina? You're one of them, how about you? Ooh, you're closer than Lori Hock, obviously. 885 years this group of people has given just to this district. Many have also had years of experience in other districts and brought their wealth and their knowledge to us. So with that, I'm going to call the following people, congratulations, everyone. First up is Terry Brown. Bob Christensen, he's hanging out in Delaware. Dorinne Crowell, straight back from her 6th grade field trip. Sue Kearns, who retired about a month and a half ago, so she's not here. We also have Jeff Friedman. And Lisa Friedman. We have Grace Gerard. Followed by Jane Guyer. And Jimmy Glover, where are you, Jimmy? There you are. Congratulations. Kathleen Johnston. Good job, Gene. Eric Coons. Good job, Jimmy. Rosemary Leghorn. Bob Prichak. The retiree with the most number of years in Monroe-Woodbury, Wendy Ryan. Mary Jane Turner Gibbs, good job, guys. Rochelle Wilson. Those are all members of our MWTA, congratulations, everyone, good job, Gene. All right, now we have a number of CSEA folks, largely our custodial staff, our Buildings and Grounds Department, and our bus drivers. Joseph Pauline. Joseph Sardon. And we have Art Schmedline, who retired a couple months ago as well. Congratulations. And to round out, we have members of our MWEA. Congratulations to Joe Bernardo. Robin Kraus. Bessie Freundlich. Nancy Gartiser, who's hanging out in Florida. Kathy Hannan. Lorraine Huburger. Carol Pejak. Mary Ruff. Mary Sanborn. And Dwayne Shiafo. Good job, John. Good job. That's it? Nope.
I do. What?
This is the last person I want to give you a little dab.
Hey, look, Elsie.
Wait, 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 hold on, we didn't get it there, sorry.
Don't let him see you.
Huh? Don't let him see you? Why?
Here.
Take a little more.
It's for their protection.
Yes, it's true.
My daughter had a ton of these. Pocket bags.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we have like a thousand of them. Great, and now they're all worth it. I just need a few more.
What is she, fresh man?
Sounds like Hawaii. I could smell the lava.
It said back that the entrance is on 105. I gotta find it.
He should've come to Leeburg, Illinois.
The retiring class of 2018.
A lot of people.
Yeah? A lot of high school.
Some of them are amazing.
What a rowdy crowd. In recognition of our retiring board member, Michael Solotto. We are losing you too soon. Evidently, we've already lost him. He is not running for another term on the board, claiming he got a big job promotion, and his time is so constricted he could not do justice to fulfilling his duties as a board member, evidently. Well, I guess we will have to believe him, and we will miss him. We will miss Michael's presence, his cogent questions, his steady leadership of the Audit Committee, and we will miss his comprehensive understanding of all things financial. Now, don't mind me. Is this what it's like in class? Okay. To tell a story out of school, so to speak, when Michael received the first financial statement in the Board's monthly report, he asked our Assistant Superintendent for Business and Management Services to send him all the underlying spreadsheets. Solotto knew what was going on financially, and had the capacity to board down and ask granular questions, which he did. Michael is serious of purpose, attentive to details, yet cognizant of the big picture. His actions aim to serve the interests of all of our students, and for this and more, it is that, that his departure will be mourned by the Board and the administration we serve and oversee. We applaud his continued success in his profession, though it has denied us his continued success on our school board. Good luck, Godspeed, and goodbye to Michael from all of us on the Monroe-Woodbury Board of Education, and even though he isn't here, let's give him a round of applause. And if you miss him, come to next week's board meeting at the Ed Center, because he will be there. Elsie will help me on this one. Our Board of Education representative from the student body, Sanjana Shashakamur, is graduating, leaving us for George Washington University, and a life and career that I am sure will be filled with professional success and personal fulfillment. Sanjana, or as Stacy Hints calls her, Suj, has been a valuable member of our team, bringing concerns and suggestions to the Board and administration from students in all corners of our district. The mutual respect shared by Sanjana and the Board has gone a long way towards effective communication, whether it be helping to stimulate voter registration in the high school, conscientiously putting forward the voice of the students in anticipation of the tribute and walkout surrounding the Parkland, Florida shooting, or stimulating discussion and action about student desire to have the district help them be more aware and active in political and global affairs. Sanjana has done a great job in bringing students, administration, and the school Board closer together in understanding and respect. She is kind, caring, and also a force to be reckoned with. Good luck, Sanjana, we will miss you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Go over there and...
Am I allowed, Mr. Board President?
Yes. Special dispensation for you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Huber, the Board of Education, Central Administration, I really, truly appreciate the opportunity that was given to me this year. I really wanted to focus on communication, I think that that was the most important part regarding this, like, the perspective of the student body, and I'm very, very truly grateful that you were listening the entire time. There was never a moment when I was working with all of you that I felt that you didn't hear our voices, so I really would like to thank you for all of that, and, I'm sorry, and to thank you again for always keeping us in mind, if it's our safety, our education, our security, our enjoyment, our fun in school, this is a place where I want to be every single day, and I really hope that I allowed other students to want to feel that way too, and thank you again for all of your help with that. I'm really, really grateful, I just, I don't think I've ever been able to say that enough for all that you've done for me, and for the entire student body this year, so, thank you very much.
All right, well, I'm calling the meeting back to order so we can leave a little early, we just had a one-minute break, no Board of Ed business was done, we will now have the presentation of the high school yearbook first?
Yes.
John Casti.
Mr. Casti again.
Mr. Casti.
It's my pleasure to be up here again to introduce the advisors of the Yearbook Club, Ms. Laura Gary and Mrs. Rachel Rosario, who have a great core of students that they worked with this year to create an outstanding yearbook. I got a sneak peek earlier today, it's a great yearbook, great work done by all our students, something that they should all be very proud of. So, here comes the Yearbook Club.
Let me just introduce Bella. Yeah. Short people problems. Hello, everybody. So I just want to take a second to say thank you for everyone who supports us in this journey of making the yearbook. We have a wonderful student body that supports us, and I think it's the largest our club has ever been, we have over 20 members this year. And I'm just introducing Isabella Minatulo, she's our Senior Editor-in-Chief, and she's just gonna say a little something about the book.
Should I start? Okay. Hi, I'm Isabella, and I'm the Senior Editor-in-Chief for the 2018 yearbook. I've been a part of the Yearbook Club for the past four years of my high school experience. I've been a part of the Yearbook Club for the past four years of my high school experience. This club becomes your family while you work side by side to create a book that means so much to so many people. This year, we created a 360-page book, which is the largest book ever produced. Our theme is moving forward, looking back. We, as a team, chose this theme because we were thinking about our lives as we move on from high school, from choosing a college, joining the military, or beginning a career. As we do this, there are always moments to look back to our high school years. And there, and that's where the yearbook comes in place. We made this book to make it possible to reminisce on our high school memories and to see how much we have changed throughout the... How much we changed. Throughout the book, we included past photos in black and white, while the current school year photos were in color, showing how much we all changed in the little time we have spent in the Monroe Woodbury High School. This book would not have been possible to create without the help of everyone around us. The parents were friends who helped us, helped drive us around to collect community ads that helped fund the book. The photographers from Life Touch helping with candidates through this school year. Also, William Dimmitt always being at the events capturing so many moments. This year, the club included 11 juniors, one sophomore, 10 freshmen, and five seniors. I want to take a moment to acknowledge my fellow senior members, Maddie Klon, Sammy Tomasi, Nicole Sharidan, and Eric Fernandez. Thank you for everything you do. The book has meant so much to us, as we have been together for so long, working together to perfect our sections and make this book one to remember. We, as a club, worked extremely hard to complete the yearbook, and we could not have done it without the support from Mrs. Gary and Mrs. Rosario, ensuring we finished everything we needed to get done. I hope you all enjoy the book as much as we do. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is the largest book they've ever produced, at 365 pages. So, congratulations, everybody.
I can't lift it.
Little baby, that's great.
Do we hold for the tenured employees?
Yes. Um, well, you can do it next week.
Yeah, do it next week. Have that, have Mike, you know, Dan will do it next week, I'm not here.
Um, oh. And now, the presentation of the middle school yearbook. Michael Masano.
All right, hello, everyone, once again. I just want to welcome here on the stage with me, in a token of appreciation for all they've done, all year long, to collect the many, many, many memories of Monroe Woodbury Middle School's 2017-2018 school year. To the stage, the Monroe Woodbury Middle School Yearbook Club, as well as the advisors, Ms. Danielle Roman and Ms. Laura Koch.
All right, so tonight for the middle school, we have presenting the yearbook, three eighth graders. We have Ian, who's passing out the books behind me, and then we have Stephanie and Alana, who are going to tell you a bit about the book this year.
Thank you.
Good evening. We would like to present to you the Monroe Woodbury Middle School Yearbook. Our theme this year is "Then and Now." Our theme focuses on how much we have grown mentally, physically, academically, and technologically over the years. One highlight of the book is that eighth graders, faculty, and staff shared baby pictures of themselves.
If you turn to page 89, you will see some pretty cute pictures of our administrators when they were young.
It says motion to approve.
On page 95, we remember Mrs. O'Sullivan, who was a secretary at our school for 15 years. And on page 136, we asked 10 of our retirees what they were looking forward to after their many years working in the middle school and throughout the district. We are very proud of this year's yearbook, and hope you enjoy looking through it. Thank you.
We will recognize newly tenured staff, but first, I need a motion to approve the recommendation of tenure appointments. Do I have a motion?
Second.
And moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Matt Cravitz will present the tenure.
Well, congratulations, now that these folks have just received tenure. Tenure's a big deal, and you saw some people at the tail end of their careers, and this is a group of people who are really at the start. So, for those who are here tonight, please come on down. We have Ryan Ahern from the middle school. Candace Edwards Allen from the high school. Kelly Phosphate from the high school. Matthew Hodges from the high school. Kelly Hughes from Smith Clove. Michelle Sherman from the, Michelle Sherman from the high school. Susan Slotbauer from the middle school. And Hannah Walton from Pine Tree. Congratulations, everyone. Nice job, Michelle. Congratulations, Susan. Congratulations.
A revised agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the revised agenda?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Personnel, Matt? No, we don't do that yet. We do the Future Business Leaders of...
Down, we'll move.
America.
Absolutely.
Presentation. Jackie Polkenix will be presenting.
All right.
Oh, yours talking?
No. I'm just going to be good there.
Is it going to, like, fall off? Is this going to stay?
Come, come. Good, good.
So I just want to start off by saying thank you so much to the Board of Education for having us here and taking time out of your busy schedule. Future Business Leaders of America present to you guys today. What we're going to be talking about is our past year, all the activities we've taken part in, all that we've accomplished this year, and the new things we've started this year. So we're just going to introduce ourselves. My name is Anjani Mahir, and I was the chapter president this year.
I'm Victoria Lee, and I'm the secretary.
I'm Tiffany Yang.
I'm Pratishah, and I'm our chapter treasurer.
So most of you probably know what Future Business Leaders of America is, but just in case you didn't, it's the largest student business organization in the world. It has approximately 230 members, 230,000 members. And what we focus on in this organization is members' leadership skills, whether it is public speaking, giving presentations like we are right now, running for office, or holding an officer position, whether it be on the local, the state, or the national levels. And one really big part of FBLA is our academic competitions. So whether it be a written exam in various different topics, or it would be a presentation event we would give in front of judges. And last but not least, we have community service. Community service is a really big part of FBLA. We love giving back to our community. That gives us so much. So, the FBLA holds, hosts the two blood drives, the Fall and Spring Blood Drive in the high school. And what we do is we help sign people in, we're escorts, we work at the canteen table, and we work alongside New York Blood Center to help them run their drives smoothly. We also attend the Breast Cancer Walk every year at the Commons, and we've taken part in the Walk for Justin, the Business Expo, and the epilepsy walk. So our State Leadership Conference, we attended, all the officers actually attended the State Leadership Conference. In the beginning of April, we went up to Binghamton, and a lot of us actually placed. So we had Eileen Wang, our vice president, who couldn't be here with us today, and Christina. They placed third in social media campaign. We had Lauren Granowski place first, and Anusha placed fifth in business communications. We had Kyle, one of our new members, placed fifth in agribusiness. We had Anusha place third in parliamentary procedure. And as a chapter, we placed seventh in the chapter of the year, which is the scrapbook that we put together throughout the entire year that includes all the activities that we take part in. And each chapter makes a scrapbook, and it's judged at the state competition.
This year, we were happy to elect two state officers. So, I'm Victoria Lee, and I ran and was elected as the state secretary. And we also have Anusha Dawson.
So I'm Anusha Dawson, and I was appointed as the state coordinator. To become a state officer for FBLA, first you have to take the state officer exam at our district competition. And this year was very competitive. A lot of people in our grade or in our state wanted to run for our state position. So we had to place in the top three of all those running for our positions. We also have to be interviewed by a Board of Trustees member in the fall, and you have to apply for our state position. Running as a parliamentary, I was also interviewed by another Board of Trustees member and the current New York State FBLA president for my position, and I just take a parliamentary position.
Just to give you a little introduction into what we do, as to the seven mainline officers, we will be serving on committees with the officers throughout the state. And we will also be, personally for me, I'm a secretary, so I record minutes and I take attendance, but for Anusha, he runs the parliamentary procedure, so I'm just going to be there. Oh, you can't hear back there. Thank you so much for getting on the podium.
So one of the big things we did this year was establish a middle-level chapter, because we wanted to introduce FBLA to the middle school. So, the benefit of this was starting early for the younger kids, because FBLA is pretty complicated, and there's a lot of levels to it. So, starting in the middle school would help the middle schoolers transition easier when they come to FBLA in the high school, and it would also establish more interest in the club. So, another big thing about FBLA, as Anjani mentioned, was developing leadership skills, and we feel that's important to start earlier, as you become a better leader, as you go on and practice these things when you become older. And hopefully, we will expand our chapter by having a middle-level chapter, because they will remain in FBLA throughout their high school career, and we'll have more people competing at the state and local events, and they'll hopefully bring home more trophies.
So, why FBLA? FBLA helps students facilitate from being a high school student into the, into being an employee, and it helps sharpen our communication skills and our leadership skills, and it helps prepare high schoolers for the workforce beyond.
It's not necessarily business all the time. FBLA gives you the opportunity to learn leadership skills that can help you in any case and every... And we don't all have 4.0 GPAs. We're a very open and supportive community, and if people are also doing other extracurricular activities, we're very understanding of that.
Every year, our FBLA chapter designs and produces the drama production tickets, and our officers work tirelessly every year to design and cut out each ticket and as well as sort them. This year, with our middle schoolers, we also did an activity with them to introduce them to the parley pro procedure, where they got to make trail mix and learned to recognize the chair.
Some other activities that we did with the middle schoolers in order to get them kind of introduced into FBLA, we didn't want them to be overwhelmed with anything that we do, so we did smaller activities, so they can get a taste of what FBLA is. So one thing that we did is we had them memorize FBLA creed. We did a competition where the students broke up into groups, and they had to memorize as much as they can, and then we went around, had them each recite it, and whoever was able to recite it the most received a prize. Another thing that we did was do a mock publication design presentation. Publication design is one of the academic competitions that we compete in, in which students have to, there's a prompt that they're given, and they have to create a publication, promotional, promotional item in order to promote whatever they're doing. So we, again, broke the middle schoolers up into small groups, where they were able to do a mock presentation. And it's something like this that we want them to get involved in when they come to the high school and actually compete in competition, so just for them to get a taste of what they would be competing in once they come to the high school. So I just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Masano, the principal of the middle school, for meeting with us, for listening to our ideas, and for supporting us in starting this chapter at the middle school. We wouldn't have been able to do this without him, and he was really enthusiastic and excited to start this middle-level chapter at the middle school. So thank you, Mr. Masano. And, yeah, round of applause. And our officer team hopes to come back in September, and we would love for the Board of Ed members to maybe join the professional division. I know our advisor, Mrs. Polkenix, is part of it, and we have a few other, other people that we work with that are part of our professional division, and it actually helps us as a chapter. You can mentor us in any activity. You can mentor us in any activities we do, and it helps with our scrapbook. So, we hope to see you guys in September, and thank you. Thank you for taking your time today.
Personnel, Matt?
Good evening. I respectfully request approval for the item listed under Personnel.
Do you have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. We need a motion to approve the recommendations of the Committee on Special Education and Preschool Special Education items 12.01020304.
Motion.
A motion? Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Do we have a motion to adjourn and do executive session to discuss personnel matters?
Motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Where's the exec? Across the hall.
And there is food in the cafeteria if anyone would like to eat. There is food.
Great, there's food in the cafeteria. For you diehards out there, congratulations. You've stayed long enough. All right. Meeting adjourned.